Let's open a meeting and I want to first ask for a motion to waive the reading of the announcement of the open meeting recordings.
Also move.
Any discussion on that? In favor, roll call?
Dick Williams, aye.
Sean Moore, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. So, once again, just for everybody's information, they can access this through Zoom by taking a look at our agenda, which is posted on the town website, which also gives a phone number to enter by non-Zoom. Okay. We have minutes, first of all. So, we have, we have the minutes of June 23rd.
The motion to accept them in, so June 23rd.
Dick Williams, second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or comment?
On the minutes, I believe it's the... One second. Oh, yes. Kevin Quinn suggested the board consult with the town council on the change of proceed, process, and that was the... Oh, one more minute, try to flip the thing back. This is, like I say, was on the last page, homeowners agreement. Was that done?
Yes. Dave has sent off questions to town council. Dave, I'm assuming we have not received an answer yet?
Exactly right. We have not received an answer yet, and we're still waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything further on the minutes? Looking for a motion to accept the... No, you... Sean, you already motioned, and Dick, you seconded, right?
The other way.
Okay. Anyway, all in favor, roll call?
Dick Williams, aye.
Sean Moore, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. Okay. Next is A&R's, which we have none. Item five, Maple Hill subdivision estates administration. We do have a report on Maple Hill from Quinn Engineering, rather brief, to say the least.
Yeah. Read it, okay with it.
Yeah. And only other thing I would note is that, I think it was yesterday, I did take a ride over there, and they definitely had the road, including the center line, all staked out. It looked pretty much, looks like gravel was in place, and I also noticed there was paving equipment on site. So, I don't know, they may have even been paving today, for all I know. But it looks like they're pretty well ready, too. Okay. Any further comment on Maple Hill?
Okay. No.
Okay. Next is Bryce Lemon, Development Administrations. Once again, we have a brief report from Quinn Engineering. Again, not much really, in terms of information in that report. And again, I did take a ride over there. I don't know. Dick, did you also?
I took a ride over there, not seeing Quinn's report, but I basically was looking for the tie into the rail trail, you know, the condition of the detention pond, the two detention ponds, and the walls, the up in the back. They were putting down gravel, and they were coming in, I thought, with grindings, rather, for the sidewalk at the time.
Yeah. Okay. I saw that also.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not sure whether they have finished with that retaining wall, you know, near the entrance or not. And, well, for your information, particularly Sean, I was at the planning board office, and Joe Buckley showed up and came to, I guess, you know, pretty much agreement that, you know, he is all, pretty much all set with the wall. But whether it is complete or not yet, I don't know. I guess the one thing that kind of mystified me was, I noted to him, they have definitely put another row of blocks on the wall, filled them with concrete, but they've got, I don't know, a half a dozen or more of what I call three by four foot by six inch thick cement slabs laying around. I have no idea what those are going to be for. It doesn't seem they would fit anywhere. So, I really don't know about that part. The other thing that surprised me a little bit is that they had installed granite inlets at each one of the catch basins, and I kind of thought that we were done with those a long time ago.
Yeah.
But they're there, so...
Norm, when I read this Bryce Lemon one, it said the Wyndham Circle Dry Detention Basin 4-1 located at Station 4.00. Can you roll out the map and show us where that is? I know you can't, but, Norm, can you tell me about where that detention pond is?
I don't have a hint.
Pardon?
I don't have a hint. I don't know how, I don't know if Dave has the plans handy. I'm assuming...
Isn't Station 4 plus 00, that's, that's 400 feet?
That's what that would be. So, I'm assuming he's talking about 400 feet in from Main Street. Not from Shinnick.
Or in, in Wyndham Circle. Oh, excuse me, Woodside Ave., rather. Or is it, or is it...
The thing is, you know, he said dry detention basin.
Yeah.
The existing detention basins still have some water in them.
Correct.
So, that's what, that's what makes me think that this is a different detention pond.
That's, that's what I'm trying to, you know, and that's what I'm thinking that it is, but I'd like to know whereabouts it is. It's just not setting in, because I thought the detention ponds for Phase 1 were all in and been used.
I, I think, I think this is a detention pond for Phase 3.
You lost them.
For Phase 3?
Yeah.
All right, well...
400 feet, that, that's just a little ways, if, if I'm thinking of this right. That, that's just 400 feet off of Main Street. And considering the hillsides and all that there, it would make sense, you know, if you're entering Bryce Lemon from Main Street, that on the left-hand side, somewhere there, there would probably be a detention basin.
I'm thinking that there is a shot, is that Wyndham Circle on that side?
I...
That they haven't put in yet?
Uh, I don't think, I don't think Quinn is indicating that that detention basin has anything to do with Wyndham Circle. Okay? He talked about the earth, the earthquake and grading taking place, you know, of that West Wyndham Circle, East Wyndham Circle, period, then new sentence, dry detention basin 4-1. So, I think it's just, I don't think they're associated. Would have to see the plans to know.
I, I am thinking that I might... Oh, good. Your internet connection is unstable. As well as, hey, perhaps sometime this week, I might take a buzz up and take a look at the plans. I'll let Dave know ahead of time that I'm coming.
Yeah.
So, anyway, the... I just want to know where the heck it is.
Yeah. But that's, you know, that, that's the, that's the way I'm reading the report. And I could be wrong.
All right, well, I'll take a look at the plan sometime and try to satisfy my curiosity about that.
Okay. Any other comments on, any other comments on Bryce Lemon?
Hi, this is Sean Mead from 73 Woodside. I was just checking in to see if we heard anything back from the Holden DPW and anything like that, and how they handle their detention ponds that they have in similar developments. And if we've heard, I caught the tail end of that. We haven't heard back from town council with any other questions yet?
Yeah, that, that is correct. And our connection to Holden is with our member, Tim Narwold, who is not here right now. He's supposed to be joining us sometime before too long. I think he's been pretty well occupied with a lot of other personal stuff, so it would surprise me if he has anything new.
Okay.
Again, I cannot, I can't predict when we're going to have something back from town council, but it would seem reasonable to expect that by our next meeting, this is a pretty good chance that we might.
Okay.
Hello? Hi, this is Lamoye from 7 Oakley Drive. I was just wondering, the retention wall on 7 Oakley, is that all set? The issue with that is all resolved?
The...
There was an issue in the last meeting about the retention wall, so it's one retaining, I'm sorry, retaining.
The retaining wall?
Yes.
Uh, we, we have reached an agreement regarding the construction of it. I cannot say that it is completely done yet. We have, we have reached an agreement on what needs to be constructed, and we have talked with our DPW Commissioner, Joe Buckley, and he feels satisfied that the, the plan to finish it up is sufficient for the needs.
Did she, she was on Oakley, the lady that was on, is on here with you, Norm?
Yeah.
The, was the detention wall on Woodside Ave., or was it on Oakley Ave.?
It's, and it's on Oakley, retaining, towards the back.
It's way up in the back, that house that sits way back?
Yes.
And you're referring to that, that detention wall? That's different than the one on the...
Oh.
On Main Street there, on the main part.
Sorry about that. The status, the condition, the acceptability of that, I believe falls to the building commissioner. It's not a planning board item, because it does, it's not part of the roadway.
Okay, so there's nothing to worry about for that wall?
Pardon?
There's nothing to worry about, because I know the last meeting was a problem, so I just wondered.
I wouldn't say that.
No, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying we didn't discuss it, but I, it's, it's quite a retaining wall, but it does not fall under the jurisdiction of the planning board.
Okay.
I don't know, did we ask for a engineered, on that wall, an engineered plan?
I don't think we can. I think, and I'm, again, I'm not sure, but we might have noted to, to the building inspector that, you know, that there should be some documentation, that it is an engineered wall.
Yes. May I ask, Tamika, make sure you have that in the notes, please?
You've got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on Bryce Lemon?
Are we going to wait for, we're going to wait just on that trail connection? Wait for the... See, town council, that's different than the town council. I just can't believe he hasn't worked on it at all.
Uh, yeah. It, I don't know, I'm, I'm... It's, it's frustrating to me, considering that it just doesn't seem to me that that's, would be a huge project for him to handle, you know, at this point. But I don't know, the only other thing I can say is, it's got to be done, and, and really done well, before he even thinks about coming to us for acceptance of Phase 1.
Correct.
And... I don't know, and again, I don't know if it necessarily falls under our jurisdiction again, but obviously, the, the trail has to be graded. I don't think we have any particulars on the surface of the connection. But it was certainly also seen to me that, for example, the, the sidewalls of the detention pond where the, the trail is bordering are going to have to be, have to be lone seeded and growing.
Yeah.
Before we're going to find that acceptable.
I agree.
You know, it's kind of one of these things where it's, you know, it's easy to grade it off, they bring in a hydrocedar and say, hey, yads done.
Yeah.
And then you get a rain, and it all washes into the pond.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is Sean from 73 Woodside again. I just had a question, and kind of looping back to it. Was there any, I guess, thing put in for like a guardrail along the edge of the detention pond off that rail trail access before it's done? Was there any agreement to that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I just thought that it was agreed that there was going to be a guardrail or something, just to keep kids from riding their bikes off the edge and stuff like that. I just wanted to see if there was any part of that that coincided with the...
Was that between, was that between the homeowners and Blair?
Any kind of, any kind of fencing around that? Yes, it was going to have to be.
Okay. I thought that was for the, the detention pond itself, not the rail trail access. I thought that was part of, something you guys had, part of that, once we had talked about it and everything.
No.
Okay.
Okay. One more time, anything more regarding Bryce Lemon?
Done.
Done?
Yes.
Okay. Then on to the next, revision tracking. In your packet, assuming you have it, we got a memorandum from Quinn Engineering with suggestions for a, I guess, a revision. Plan revision tracking policy. In taking a look at it, I don't know, I've read it through two or three times, and I don't know, I pretty much like just about everything that's in there. I guess the, the only thing that I, I thought of, and I know that I discussed this a little bit with, with Dave, and when Joe Buckley was also there, that in addition to all of this, that when there is a revision on a plan, that this would be, on the plan itself, some kind of a very visible symbol locating where on the particular plan that revision is. Whether it be some great big bold capital REVs, or a giant smiley face, or I don't really care what, but something so that we don't have to go hunting all across the page to find out where that revision might be.
And should that kind of funny face or whatever, we should have different ones, so if they revise it three or four times, we don't get confused?
I made it just in time, I see.
All right, Tim.
Okay, Tim.
Norm, what we typically do in the, in the, I guess, engineering, is we put like a triangle, and then the number, which would be the revision number, next to the, next to the, whatever was changed, say it was a grade level, you put a triangle, and then like a one, and that would indicate that that was changed in revision one.
Yeah. Okay. You know, I, I don't care whether it's a triangle, a circle, or what.
Yeah.
But just something that's going to make it stand out, so you don't have to go hunting everywhere to find it.
And the beauty of putting the number in that represents a revision, is the last set of drawings.
Oh, I just lost your audio.
Just lost it.
Tim, you disappeared.
Okay, Tim. I have a question also, Norm.
Okay.
When a revision is done, do they have to record it at the courthouse?
I don't believe so. Unless it would, unless it would involve the change of boundaries. So, in other words, you know, if they, if they have to move the placement of a drain pipe five feet left or right, or something like that, I don't think something like that has to be recorded at the courthouse.
Okay.
It does have to be shown on the ASBIL plans.
Yes. All right. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
The, and I know this is getting kind of picky, but on that last bullet, it says, when a revision plan is submitted to the planning board, it will be accompanied by a memorandum, which identifies the revision number, date of the revision, and I'd just like to put in the word a detailed description of the revision.
I agree, Norm.
He's back.
Yep. Okay. So, you know, because if we just, if just say description, and I don't know, we could maybe even enhance that some more.
Detailed description?
Yeah. We could, we could even maybe go further, and again, I'll leave that one to Tim, maybe, to comment.
Well, you could, Norm, you just put in there detailed engineering, just engineering change description, or something like that.
Yeah. That sounds good, too. I just, you know, I, I just, you know, I, I just don't want to, you know, get, get the description, and it says, you know, like you say, you know, moved drain pipe two feet, and that's all it says.
Oh, or Norm, I've, I've seen on drawings, and this is the example, moved line. What the heck does that mean?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that, that doesn't tell you a heck of a lot of anything.
No.
So...
And the good thing about getting this memorandum is it can go into the file.
Well, this, to me, this would, this would go in, this would, this would, for each subdivision, this would become a revision notebook.
Yes, correct.
That, that, you know, goes right along with, with the plan.
Yep. Yep. Perfect.
Anybody else? Any, any thoughts on, on this whole thing?
No. When I read it, Norm, I, I was like, excellent, Kevin put down what I've been thinking for a long time, and just didn't put it on paper. Is Carl still with Kevin, or is he just on vacation?
I guess, I guess Carl does not live really locally. He's some distance away.
Okay.
And I don't know where, so I guess he is handling the business closer to where he lives, and Kevin is handling the stuff closer to where he lives.
Okay.
So, as near as I know, he's still, he's still with Quinn Engineering.
All right. I just, when I saw this memorandum, I was like, oh oh.
Yeah.
I was like, maybe vacation, but hopefully not gone.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm, well, you know, I can't say that for certain, but that, that's my impression. And honestly, I do not know where Carl lives, but apparently it isn't...
What about Charleston?
Yeah, I think, Dick, he lives in Charlton, down in the north or south Worcester County.
Yeah. So, it's probably just a whole lot more convenient for him not to have to run up to do the inspections up here.
All right.
So... Well, um...
I guess I came in at the end, Norm, huh?
Well, yeah, kind, you know, kind of. But we did have someone, and I don't know if they're still online, they, they were asking whether we had gotten any further information from Holden about how they handled detention ponds and that sort of thing.
I talked to, because I hadn't got anything back, so I went and talked to Chief Buckley.
Yeah.
And he, he's making an effort to do that interface for me. I haven't gotten back to him. We talked last week. So, I will check with him tomorrow. I didn't have a chance today, because I was running around Hudson and Marlboro, and then I had a construction meeting this afternoon, early evening, so I will check back. But Chief Buckley said sometimes it's difficult to get in touch with the chief over in Holden, because he's so busy, but he was going to take it on and see if he could help me out.
Yeah. Okay. So...
So, I've made headway, I just haven't got the answer yet.
Yeah. So... Okay. But other than that, back, back to this tracking system. Anybody else, any thoughts? Are we done with it to proceed, or do you think we need more time to review it a little more, or what?
I think we should put it in our, do we have to vote on it to put it into our subdivision regs? Or do you have to have a...
I, I am pretty sure we can simply vote it as a policy.
Okay.
I'm for it.
I will make a motion to accept the... I will make a motion to accept the tracking revision plan as laid out in the memorandum from Quinn Engineering for the planning board.
Could you just come in for a second? Sorry.
Yep.
I'm just ones wondering, Tim, if you could just provide us another bullet point with the idea of the triangle with the revision number, like some proper language for that? And make that part of the document, because that's not in here.
Alright, I could make, Norm, you want me to, to make a, I guess I'll make the motion to accept this with the fourth bullet added as detailed engineering change description, and a fifth bullet with the description of symbology for revisions on plans.
Okay, and I'm sure we can come up with a specific language for that, you know, we have the idea.
Okay, good. Yeah, exactly, okay.
So. Okay, so I have a motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? I don't know, I heard something in the background? No?
Marilyn's here.
What? Oh, Marilyn's here.
If I may, Tim, remember, I mean, Tim the Toolman Taylor, his neighbor Mr. Wilson?
Sean, I'm barely hearing you, I'm getting every other word.
Yeah.
Okay, I can drop your camera down a little bit. You look like the neighbor from that TV show Tool Time.
Well, I didn't want to show all, I didn't want to show all the sweat that I've had from being out in the sun all day.
It's been hot. Muddy.
Okay. Anyway, Marilyn's still muted, she's there, but she's still muted. So she needs to unmute. There she goes.
Did you get me? No?
Yep.
Yep.
Anybody hearing me? You hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, because I have a question. Does this not go on, is there a book that these sheets are all in? Or are they just noted on the plan?
No, the, the, the fourth bullet that, assuming you have the memorandum in front of you.
I do.
That fourth bullet, okay, requires a separate document that gives all of the information about it, and that, that will become a running record of revisions.
And that will be?
To be placed in a notebook or file or whatever.
Oh, okay. Very good.
The, the drawing, Norm, will still have the revisions on it, this will be just the English description of those revisions.
Right, right.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I think it's looks.
Okay, so we had a motion, I think we had a second.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, okay, any further discussion? Okay, in favor, roll call?
Dick Williams, aye.
Marilyn Sedoti, aye.
Tim Norwald, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. Okay, I would now accept a separate, or a second motion that once this is in its complete form and placed on planning board stationary, that we will address and mail to every significant builder in town a copy of this policy.
Still moved.
Discussion. Okay, once again, in favor, roll call?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim Norwald, aye.
Marilyn Sedoti, aye.
And Norm Anderson, aye. It is unanimous.
Just a quick question on this, so is the intent that this goes into effect now, immediately? So any changes to any active subdivisions shall be treated in this manner once it's been mailed out?
We voted it as a policy, once you voted, it's in effect.
So it applies to active subdivisions?
Yes.
Alright, good.
Correct.
Which in whatever we sent out to them, probably should have a preface that clarifies that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yes.
That they've got 48 hours to comply?
That long?
Okay, so, okay, we can take a look at that and get that out pretty damn quick.
Dave, I will try after I get off this meeting to write you and I'll, I'll copy the, or should, am I allowed to copy the whole board that changes, or am I violating open meeting law by doing that?
Um, if, whatever you could do, I'd appreciate, you can distribute it to the entire board. When you run amok of the open meeting law, is if there's discussion of it, once you've distributed it. So I guess if there's any conversation that the board wants to have after it, if you could just direct those comments to me, then I can triage it and respond accordingly. It's when you have the back and forth by email, that's when you run amok of the open meeting law. Really distributing information is okay.
I'll do that, Norm, I'll try to get it done tonight and to, to the board before I hit the sack for the fourth bullet, and then a description, and then I'll probably do a little drawing of the revision, how it is, and then scan that in and send it to Dave.
Okay, sounds good.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, planning board reorganization. Since we have had an election and, uh, this is our.
It was close, close.
Yeah, I know it was, like I say, that was a tough fight.
Luckily, I didn't have a tie.
Yeah. So, um, anyway, after, after each election, and this is our first kind of real meeting with everybody as members, we probably should take a look at it, so what's anybody's thoughts?
Personally, I feel like to hold it till our next meeting if we're in person.
We know when that's gonna be.
Our next meeting, period.
So continue with the board as it is until the next meeting where we'll do a reorganization?
Correct, in person.
I'm okay with that.
I don't care if we meet in the middle of the parking lot.
So, yeah, I just do want to note to you that, you know, we had considered holding this meeting in, in person, but there was just a few too many unknowns, and I think particularly Dave is gonna try his best to see what kind of guidance we can get i- in terms of the necessary precautions, you know, for holding in-person meetings. And, you know, it's kind of one of these things where, you know, he, he brought up a couple of things even that I had not thought of. You know, for, for example, you know, the, the one indoor place that would probably be reasonable is the downstairs of the community hall. And I know everybody loves that place. But, uh, you know, to me, there's a question of what about sanitizing it, if it's been used for anything else? Okay, what about access, particularly for, some, I know some of the restrictions on these things, the COVID thing are, you have to have two paths of egress, and both of them need to be handicap accessible. Yeah, you know, and, you know, and those kinds of things, and.
And we're gonna have to bulldoze the town hall?
Yeah. Which might not be a bad idea, anyway.
Sounding good.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have brought that.
Uh, un- unless, or let's, assuming we get at least some kind of reasonable guidance, I really would like our next meeting to be in person. Like I say, it's, uh, this one, this one wasn't a hard meeting to do, but most of the meetings, they just don't work that well.
Yeah.
Uh, this way.
Norm or Dave, have you heard when the library's opening up? Has, has there been a set date for that?
I have not heard yet. I know they're still doing the, a delivery service, but the library itself is closed.
I, I think it's selectmen's meeting, Mike Nicholson alluded that he is still looking for guidance from the state on that.
Okay.
If I may, Norm, that's right, he hasn't gotten guidance from the state, so the library and the community center remain closed for now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
The, the reason, to me, I guess maybe, and I know Mike's getting inaugurated tonight, because they have the ability to close the library off, if I remember right, with those, um, those gates? And just use the lower, um, what do you call it, lower, uh, meeting rooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they have been using those, for example, like Skip Clark, he prefers to be there in person. So Mike was in the room with him doing Zoom so that he could participate. I know Peter has been using that room for ConCom meetings, he goes in there. So the bottom half has been open for that purpose, but as far as the public goes, the whole building is still closed. Did that answer your question? I'm sorry if I.
No, 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 I just was wondering, you know, the, the big room, I mean, even if we had 10 people show up, which that would be a, a, uh, large event at the planning board, there's more than enough room in, in there to do six feet apart for us. If you, if you put a U, you know, like a U type of.
Yeah.
And then you've got all that space out in front for, you could put six feet, probably 10 or 20 people in there, 15 people.
I, I don't argue that.
Mike said that you, if you do that, because I know the finance committee, some of the board members met the other night at, in the basement of Town Hall. He said you still have to provide the Zoom so that there can be public participation, since you can't always guarantee how many people are gonna be in the room. So somebody from the board, if we met in person, would also have to be conducting a meeting on Zoom so that the public could participate.
Oh.
Oh, boy. I didn't know that. I thought when we did a public meeting, we didn't have to do Zoom.
You do, just because if the number of the public that wants to attend exceeds the number of people you can have within that space, then you run into an issue with that. So that's what the FinCom did last night. Some members met in person, Mike controlled it via the Zoom, and then there was a couple of members and myself that still did it from Zoom. So people are, it kind of just depends on the board, how people are doing it. The select board is still 100% meeting via Zoom right now. Same thing with ConCom. A couple of the members from ConCom have been going to the select board room, and Peter has been running the Zoom session from there. So it's just been different depending on each board, how they've been doing it. And I know Peter said, and I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but there is a certain number of people that can be within a designated square feet of the room, which I guess kind of kiboshed his thought of using that large conference room. I think it's something like eight people per 1,000 square feet, and that room is less than 1,000 square feet, or something like that. I'm.
No, I, I, to me, I'm not laughing at you, I'm just like, this is so out of control.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different pieces that are going into it, so I apologize. This is just the information that I've picked up from the various boards and what we've been doing.
Sounds to me like we need a amphitheater.
Can always hold it in the cemetery beside the library.
I'm good with that.
Up at the hospital, up on top of the hill, where they do the bonfire.
Yeah, right.
Alright, I just, I, I, I just think we're more effective when we're, yeah.
There's no doubt, there's no doubt about that. But.
Get it.
Uh, I don't know, let's just, let's just kind of hope that there's some good word that comes down.
Okay.
Within the next two weeks. Okay, um, under old business, there is nothing, but there, there is a point, I know it's not on our agenda, but I do want to bring it up. At a selectmen's meeting last night.
Oh, I was gonna ask you, Norm, I, before you could bring it up, I apologize to the board because I was frustrated with Sylvia, and Karen was on the meeting, and I just hopped in and gave my opinion as a board member.
Yeah. And I, I guess first of all, I'm just gonna ask Dave, did we receive any kind of notification of this removal of the property from 61A?
Um, I don't know exactly what, and what you're talking about.
That's what I thought.
Um, we, so no, the answer is we've not received official notice from the select board indicating that Dave received a certified letter from a particular party looking to have Chaplain unenrolled. So we don't have that documentation, and that request.
See, now, I don't know, to the best of my recollection, whenever there was a request for something like that, we did receive, I believe it was among other things, a copy of the application and a memo from, I believe, the select board requesting our comment.
That's what I was trying to make the point last night, is she kept saying that she sends it around, and and, Norm, I'm with your recollection, we usually got a request for comment from the select board along with the application.
Yes, it starts with the select board. The select board receives a certified letter from an applicant requesting that Chaplain be unenrolled, and then that starts the process. And then that letter is there, then distributed to the relevant boards and commissions who then make a recommendation, express an interest or not, then that gets fed back to the select board, and then they gather those things together, and, you know, they tell everybody what the result was. So we don't have that letter. We haven't been put on notice to do something.
Okay, because she said the 60 days started in, Norm, was it May or June? And I'm like, we haven't got anything, there's no 60-day clock running.
It's 120 days.
Oh, thanks, Dick. She said 60 on the select board meeting last night.
If I may.
It's always been 120 days.
I was obviously in attendance at that meeting, and the select board left it that it was up to the individual boards to respond to it. They did not have a plan to send a memo out to everybody. With that being said, I've been working with Sylvia because she also has an order of conditions or notice of intent in with the ConCom. She emailed me today and said, how do I get this before the various boards? She sent me the packet with the letter from her attorney, the assessor's map, all of those things. I explained to her that she would need to reach out to Dave to discuss having this come before the planning board. She said.
If I could, I, with all, with all, I just need to jump in. So I will talk to the select board on Laura Paradise tomorrow, and I'll request that she transmit the information as is required to this board for action, and then we will put that on the agenda once we receive notification from the select board. The notification does not come from the applicant, it comes directly from the select board. The applicant is required to provide some number of copies to the select board, one of which is a, a, a letter to the planning board.
Yeah, that's the action the select board should have taken.
Correct. It, it's not, it doesn't involve the applicant going around each department with a particular request. That's not how this process works.
Yeah.
Dave, that's what I thought too last night, but I didn't want to speak for the select board.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll follow up on it, because now, now that I'm aware of it, I'll follow up on it.
Excellent.
Okay.
Then I'll follow up with looking at the select board and how they are gonna go about it.
Yeah, they, they should, I mean, we, Norm, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but we've been, as long as I've been on the board, that's been the procedure with 61A.
Yeah, it's, you know, that, that's my, and that's my recollection, anyway.
Okay, yeah, alright. Maybe we just need to help them learn.
Well, you, you know, let's put it this way, how are we supposed to give a recommendation if we don't know that there's a, a need for one?
Well, that, that's why I tried leading the, the conversation last night, that they just can't vote last night to say that it's okay to take it out of 61A without. just can't vote last night to say that it's okay to take it out of 61A without bringing it before the board, there's a procedure that has to be followed.
Right.
Because they were, Tamika, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but they were on the verge of voting on that last night.
That is correct, and Skip wanted to make sure that it went through the proper channels.
Yeah, I was like, whoa.
Yeah. Wow.
Are we, are we talking about the four house lots that came before us?
Once again?
Are we talking about the four house lots? It was 61A and it was farmland, and now it's gonna be house lots?
Yeah, apparently, at least from what I got from this, the selectmen's meeting is that the removal from 61A involves only one of those house lots, and it's only about 20% of the area of that particular house lot.
But it was, was it from that gentleman? No.
No, Dick, I think you're thinking of a different spot. This one is up at 27 Glenwood Place.
What?
We did an A and R not too long ago for it.
And, and one estate lot.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's 61A?
Part of it is.
Okay.
On Glenwood Place.
Yeah, this is the lady that gave us all the grief when Blair wanted to do his thing up there.
Yeah. And Bacon was gonna. We just did the estate lot on. Is that the one? Because that's about the only piece of property I can think of.
There was, wasn't, if I'm not mistaken, there was also a pie-shaped or a rectangular-shaped piece of property that I think they owned that, that, I think that's what they're talking about, is the house lot, not the estate lot.
Yeah.
Wow.
And there's a percentage of it, I don't know if it's in the back or the front, that was 20 or 30% of it was 61A that they had to take out before they could sell the lot.
61A is usually farmland, fields, whatever, and I'm trying to think of who the heck it is up there.
If I had to guess, Dick, I, remembering some of that property being wet up there, the 20 or 30% of 61A is probably where the house goes and the rest is wetlands.
All right, so this, this is nothing to do with over, over, how can I say this? Over near Jefferson, this is Glenwood Place.
Yeah, it's over by the Princeton line, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
I'm totally, I'm totally, boy, side-swiped with this one here.
Dick, are you thinking?
Dave, yeah, soon you get it, I want, I want to see this because I want to look into it. Something doesn't seem right.
Because Dick, wasn't all the farmland on the other side of Glenwood Place that was owned by one of the state, state departments?
Fisheries or something like that.
Yeah.
This piece of property was owned by Bacon. They're gonna put a solar field on it, so is that the particular one or?
No, 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 this is, this is further up.
That is all the way up.
Back up on the public road.
Yeah, okay.
Remember the lady that was complaining because when the trucks were going by, her foundation was falling in?
Yeah, she lived in either Hale, I believe, yeah, oh, Rollins Hales Old Place.
It's the land right around that house.
Okay, all right. But to be classified 61A, you have to have so many, 61A, B, or 61, 61A and 61B. And I just don't remember fields up there in 61A.
Yeah. I think she said that this is only taking a small part of the remaining land that is in the 61A.
All right.
We'll have to see it, Norm, when we get it. That's, that's, that was the whole point I was trying to make last night, the select board. Having this discussion without having any application or drawings in front of me, sort of a moot point.
Yeah, yeah. And that's where, you know, when we do get it, that's gonna be when this kind of meeting is just not gonna work well.
No.
Correct.
Well, hopefully we can, in the next meeting, we can have in a open air.
Hey. Planning board on the common.
Can I, Norm or Dave, I guess since this is old business, I'm gonna ask the question because the select board had an executive session, and I know that's not open to the public, but is there any talk of Mr. Nicholson staying on for consulting services until we get a new town administrator?
Well, you know, he had, I believe, indicated that he can be around part-time.
Well, that's what I meant, yeah. I mean, Chief Monaco and those guys can run the day-to-day, but I was worried about losing his skill set in a part-time capacity.
I, I, I don't know if this is for publication, but he, I, I, I'm, I'm getting the feeling, and I, I have no way of verifying this, that they're probably gonna go through the standard procedure of a search for a new town administrator.
Yeah.
Um, Mike, Mike just, he did today on Facebook post, I guess there was an announcement for a new town administrator. You can, you can find it on Facebook if, you know. So, yeah, it just sent down.
But I think in the meantime, they asked, whoops, who was talking there?
It was Tamika, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, there's kind of a delay. They posted the position on Friday, and they're gonna be, last Friday, the 10th, and they're gonna be advertising it through the MMA.
Yeah. But I'm assuming in the meantime, they are still gonna be looking for an interim town administrator.
And that's, and that's why I was hoping that they would keep Mike on as a consultant interim as opposed to hiring somebody that's gonna, I'll just, I'll leave it at that, I don't want to say anything.
Well, and, and I don't know if this is publication, I don't know if this is something that Mike let slip, but it, he seemed to allude to the possibility that they might also have a temporary interim.
Oh, that's gonna be a mess.
And that was possibly gonna be Chief Monaco.
Oh, Norm, what, and again, this is all hearsay, what I heard, my, my understanding was Chief Monaco was gonna run the day-to-day operations, but they were gonna keep Mike on for consulting for, you know, like the COVID, the, all of the grants that are going on and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's kind of the same idea.
Okay, I'm good, that's what I was hoping for, because I, I really didn't want to have an interim come in, because the last interim we had, again, this is my opinion, it didn't work well.
You know, they're a placeholder.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, the, the only thing is, you know, when you, when, when a town gets used to having that position, if you just leave it empty, that, that's, it just, it just kind of brings an awful lot of stuff to a grinding halt.
Oh, it doesn't. No, it won't, because we'll be moving into his office.
Yeah.
Okay, then I want to run for chair because I like that big desk.
Yeah.
No.
I like soft furniture.
Yeah. I just, my, again, this is just my personal opinion, I, I think the guy's done a good job, and if he's willing to give us 60 days until we can find a new town administrator, let's take it and run with it.
Well, he, he's obviously gotta spend the vast majority of his time in his new job.
Correct.
So.
But he's young and got enthusiasm and lots of energy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm, and I'm sure he's only gonna be there for a short while too. I can picture him as one of our next governors.
Hey, Norm, I just ask him that the inaugural limitation that Karen and I got, it's not gonna cut it for the White House.
Yeah.
So anyhow, I just, I, I guess I wanted to put that out there, because I just, you know, I've, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I think he's done a good job, and I think he's been helpful, and I, I think he's done an excellent job for the town, so did Margaret, so I don't want to take anything away from her.
No, no, I think he did a good job. I didn't agree with everything he did, you know.
Yeah.
Just the same, as, well, I think I even told him that we had pretty darn good luck with our first two town administrators, I just hope our luck continues.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. The big question, planning board is, is how do they do a town administrator, that's the word I'm looking for, search committee? Last time it was only open to a few, so.
Yeah.
We'll see how this one goes.
Yeah.
So anyhow. That's it for me.
Tom?
Yep.
I have something that I would like to bring up, seeing as how David's gonna have a lot more free time now that Mike has left. We've been wanting to, you know, the business meeting and all that, but something that I feel that you're doing to help us out, one of the things I'd like to get into the subdivision regulations is find out how other towns lay out the bounds.
Okay, what are you getting at?
I feel that this is something that we can start working on and asking Dave to find out from other towns if they have, for bound backers or something like that in subdivisions. I've had, I've had too many people say to me for trial, they can't find their bounds, they don't know where they are, and I want something that's gonna be there that people can see.
I, I've long thought that every single house lot should have one of the square cement bounds at every corner.
And we used to. And I don't know how, how come it?
I, I don't recall us ever requiring it, but.
But to Dick's point, you could have the bounds requirement for the subdivision, so at least know where the subdivision is and should be.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, wait each lot. And, and what, and one only other thing that I would like to know, if sometime that, if you could dig out the retinal subdivision and what we had for conditions.
Oh, and 76.
Or special conditions or anything else left our mind before they get started.
Where the heck, would that be up in the attic, Dick? The old 76 plans and conditions?
No, right in the office.
Okay. Wow. So I guess to Dick's point, I'm gonna ask, since this is old business, and that is really old business, is that subdivision, are they going for an amendment to it or a brand-new subdivision? Because I don't even, it hasn't come before, so obviously it's been sitting in limbo for how many years, eight, 10 years?
Yeah, we, well, we, I am sure they're not looking for a new subdivision plan, but, you know, and obviously they're still dealing with wetland issues.
Yeah, I heard that.
And that's, that's probably the biggest thing. So, you know, there, there may be, they, they may pose some changes, you know, because of the, some different effects of changing, you know, the wetland requirements or whatever.
Since you were talking about that, Norm, again, this is all, I, I have no facts, it's all just hearsay, they were, when you say changing the wetlands, I'd heard that to the point of reduction in road width to make the fills amicable to the MEMA or, I'm not sure. Concom, yes. And I'm really not excited about the Concom making decisions about roads.
They don't, they don't, they don't come to us on that.
Okay, all right, good enough.
You know, and that, that idea was floated around.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, that, as far as I am concerned, would be a major enough change that it would require a hearing.
Okay.
Uh, and, you know, you know, the whole works.
All right, good enough. I just wanted to bring it up, I'd heard it, and again, it's not before.
That's my initial thoughts, anyway.
Okay, good enough.
Do we have anything else to come before the board?
All set.
I'm good.
And I'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
And any discussion? Roll call in favor?
Williams, aye.
Carolyn Sedoti, aye.
Dawn Moore, aye.
Tim Norwald, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye.
And Tamika, what time is it?
Seven, 7:50.
7:50, okay.
Okay, we're done. Have a good rest of the week, everybody.